You know I've traveled here and far to see the shining sea. I've seen a lot of places and people that are nice to me. One place that's in my heart and this is how I feel. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. She's nestled in the sand hills on a river called Cakefield, special to so many who proudly served our country here. She was named for Lafayette and known for cotton mills. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. Babe Ruth hit his first one hurt around the world. Sherman marched for the Union and burned the arsenal. Old Market House still standing but stands for freedom's will. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. My all-American city Fayetteville. Talking about my hometown Fayetteville.
Good evening and welcome to the regular Fayetteville City Council meeting for September 11th, 2017. Would like to ask Pastor Erica Griffin with the Living Stones Worship Center to come forward. Please lead us with an invocation. If everyone would please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to follow.
Good evening, Mayor. Let us all bow our heads to Heavenly Father. We come before you in the name of Jesus. God, we ask that you would be in this place this evening, that everything would be done decent and in order in your sight. Lord, let everything be executed, God, to your pleasing. And God, I pray that everything will be handled for the affairs of Fayetteville that is pleasing to your sight. Last but not least, God, please remember the families of those who lost loved ones 16 years ago to date in 9/11. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God and invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Griffin, tell us something about your mission.
Well, praise God. Once again, like I had first stated the last time I was here, we are a new church plant here in Fayetteville, North Carolina. We are still in our home as of today, but our planning board is coming together. We're executing some things, putting some things in order, so we look forward to branching out by next year. And once again, our goal is to bridge the gap with the youth of Fayetteville to understand what it is to be able to live a Christian life.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us this evening.
You're welcome, sir.
Counsel, as we move into our announcements, part of the agenda, I would like to recognize Councilmember Aarp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And if we could ask all the first responders who are present tonight, if they would, to come up to the front of the council's chambers. Mr. Mayor and the council, you know, we want to recognize these great folks for their selfless service that they provide every day to our community, to our citizens, to protect us and to keep us safe. And today's a special day, 9/11, as we remember some events that happened, and so we wanted to say thank you. And as I take a moment and read this on behalf of the council, I want you to understand what we do it to honor you. Most folks today, you know, reflected on where they were 16 years ago, as did I. 16 years ago, I was serving in the Army, Mr. Mayor, and I was in the Pentagon, serving on the Joint Staff. It was a day that changed me, but it didn't just change me, it changed all of us. It changed all of America. And it changed the realization that we had that we aren't invulnerable to foreign enemies, that there is a capability for those who seek us harm to reach out and to attempt to cause us to live in fear and to end our way of life. We will never forget that day. We will never forget the loss of coworkers and friends and American patriots who served in the Pentagon, who were lost in New York City, in the World Trade Center, and in that field just outside of Shanksville, Pennsylvania. We will also never forget those who have fallen in defense of freedom. We were at war before 9/11. Our enemies believed it. We just didn't acknowledge it. And so I would challenge those with foolish talk of war fatigue to look at where we are and where we've come from. We live in a community that's filled with patriots, and these patriots never fatigue and they never back down. They have commitment and resolve to defend freedom for each of us every day. We're thankful for all those who serve in uniform and for these ladies and gentlemen who stand here before us tonight. They are guardians of freedom for a free people. We owe them so very much for their sacrifices, and we also are thankful for all the wonderful first responders who aren't here represented tonight. They provide for our safety and they do so selfishly each day. For our children to continue to know liberty as we have, we must stand resolute and united to guard our way of life. This we must defend. We are resolved to do so, and I pray that all Americans will thank those in uniform, military and police, firemen and emergency management services, and all those who protect our way of life and our safety each and every day. Take a moment when you see them in the coming week and just say thank you. We're blessed to be Americans living in a country that is a beacon of hope around the world. I hope all will embrace the goodness of America and this day reflect on what it truly means to live in the land of the free and the home of the brave. May God bless the city of Fayetteville, the state of North Carolina, and America, and all those who defend freedom today.
Chief Hawkins, would you... I'm sorry to put you on the spot. Would you like to say anything?
No, other than, as you said, as everyone knows that we all know at this air would open up exactly where we were 16 years ago and know that we stand here, be able and ready to respond in and for all we do. So we appreciate that.
Well, this council and over 200,000 residents, thank you for doing what you do every day. Thank you. Counsel, this time I'd like to recognize Councilmember Wright, and as soon as Councilmember Wright finishes, Scott Bullard, our Emergency Management Coordinator, is going to say a few words on current conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of the council, I just want to speak briefly about the gratitude that we all have that Hurricane, Hurricane Irma did not devastate the state of Florida like it was originally supposed to. For those that believe in prayer, believe in the power of God, I just want to thank all of you. I want to thank Governor Scott that did a great job responding and all the first responders down in Florida. Because my mother is 83 years old, I have six brothers and sisters in Miami, and my mother has 55 grandchildren and great-grandchildren. I have a host of aunts and nieces and nephews right in Miami, Florida. I was there a week ago. My mother had fallen very ill and very sick, and it turned out okay, but I had to get on a plane and leave her and my family in Miami hearing about the category five storm that was tearing up the islands. And on my way taking off, I just prayed and said, "God, watch over the people in Florida." And so I am grateful for all the hard work that not only the first responders, but that everyday people just began to help one another, get boats and rescue one another's. That's the greatness of the human race, and in times of disaster and hard times, we always come together to help one another out. So I just want to say again, on behalf of this council and Fayetteville, because it was supposed to hit Fayetteville straight on early on, but it went to the east, the west coast and came back through, and there are still many that are suffering, and we continue to pray for those that were hit hardest by this big storm, this catastrophic storm that sucked the water out of the ocean. And so we understand that sometimes things we think that just happens, but things just don't happen. I believe that God is in control, and he showed us by taking control of that big storm that the state of Florida was not devastated. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Mr. Bullard. Again, Scott Bullard is the Emergency Management Coordinator, has been working with Cumberland County, and it's been, I guess, you know everybody at the National Weather Service by name when they broadcast something out, but tell us what the current conditions are, if you would.
Be glad to. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor, Pro Tem and Council. I guess the starting point tonight is to say that Irma is an unwelcome tourist in the state of Georgia right now, moving with winds about 60 miles an hour, hopefully something that we don't need to worry about specifically here. I think the latest numbers, as you said, to dine tonight, were somewhere in the neighborhood of maybe 32 mile an hour gust overnight. That's not sustained, that's just a puff of wind that'll come out of the northeast. Maybe an inch and a half most at rain, which that seems small to us. That could be an August Dog Day thunderstorm for all intent purposes, but I would also invite you to look at some of the other challenges that were going maybe around the region without limiting it to states, for instance, that went along with this storm, for instance. We were kind of nervous about a fuel disruption based on what was going on in the Gulf, and you saw the prices go up at the pump. Now, we're assured that that's going to trickle back down now that the pipeline is kind of rebounding somewhat. So that's something going into this storm that we were a little nervous about. The other piece is, out of tragedy comes opportunity. We had a lot of evacuees coming up I-95. I mean, you could see the license plate with Florida on them, eating in our restaurants, staying in our hotels, so that's good news. I'm told by the state tonight, they opened five statewide evacuee-type shelters. The population at dinner tonight was 58. That's a good number, but that's still a lot more people than what they originally envisioned. So we have a lot to be thankful for, as Councilman Wright said, but I want to celebrate being prepared. I think we saw that with our social media this time. Certainly with the water going off the shelves in the stores, people are paying attention. I don't know whether they remember Matthew that much. I guess the real prayers from this point forward now is for recovery. We went through it together with Matthew, and you can only imagine now what Florida will face. Subject to your questions, if you have any.
I see none. Thank you, Mr. Bullard, for all the hours you put in, day and night, sir. Counsel, this time we'll go to Mayor Pro Tem Colvin for an announcement with Greater Fayetteville United.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You are invited on Tuesday, September 19th, 2017, between the hours of 6:00 and 8:30 PM to the Let's Bridge the Gap Together Social Capital. Helps us collaborate to make Fayetteville a premium place, a premier place to live, work, and recreate. All are welcome to learn more and share ideas. The Greater Fayetteville United Social Capital Community Forum, it will be held at Fayetteville State University Shaw Auditorium at 1200 Murchison Road. For more information, you can call 910-849-2991. That is the Greater Fayetteville United, and this event is hosted by the Fayetteville-Cumberland County Human Relations. So ask you if you're available to please come out and enjoy that.
Thank you, Mr. Colvin. This time we'll move to Councilmember Jensen with a recognition of the FCYC member.
Good evening. I would like to introduce you to Casey Lee. Casey is a senior at Pine Forest High School, Go Trojans, and she is going to tell you a little bit about the upcoming event that we have at the Fayetteville-Cumberland Youth Council. And Casey is a cheerleader, and she is on the SGA, and she is the president of the Go Green Team at Pine Forest for recycling, so.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jensen. This weekend coming up on Saturday in downtown Fayetteville at Festival Park, FCYC is having their second Glow Fest 5K Fun Run, which is one of our big events that we try to get everyone to come out to. Again, it's hosted downtown on September 16th, this Saturday. Doors open at 6:00 and the run starts at 8:00. We like to encourage everyone to come out wearing their glow gear and just have a lot of fun with food trucks and dancing and just a lot of fun, a lot of things to remember.
Casey, I understand that's a 5K run. Where can people register?
People can go online and register at FCYCNC.org.
Great. Anything else we need to know?
No, sir, that's it.
Okay. Understand there's going to be music and a DJ and that type of thing following the run, so it's not only a 5K run, but hang out afterwards and just kind of glow with us. All right, okay. Thank you. Great to have you joining us. Counsel, this time item 5.0 is the approval of the agenda. Ms. Jensen has something else.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We've got, I mentioned that Casey was the president of the Go Green Team at Pine Forest High School, which they won a national award last year for being the, getting the most recyclables. They ended up going up against a school, I think it was in Texas, and Pine Forest, help me out, Casey, was it 13, how many pounds did they have? Do you remember?
It was somewhere about 13,000 pounds, I want to say. It was more than that.
Of plastic recycles, and the people that they were going neck and neck with, I think, what, they have like 1,000 or something? It was, we just bypassed, and Fayetteville came together and helped us out. So, yeah, we won $20,000 for our school, so we are now a complete green school. So I have a flyer here that says, "Do you recycle?" We do, and we would, we could use your help. Pine Forest High School is collecting plastic bottles, aluminum cans for your national recycling contest. You can drop off your plastic bottles and aluminum cans at our school. The address is 525 Andrews Road in Fayetteville on the north side, and if, I think if you call them, they might even come. If you have an organization, they might come and get them out for you too, but we would appreciate your help. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen. Item 5.0 is the approval of the agenda. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve?
That's a motion by Mr. Moan, seconded by Mr. Wright, and that is with the addition on item 6.08 to read and authorize the city manager to set up a public hearing and advertise Madam Attorney?
Mayor, we can add that item when we get to the consent agenda and just ask that someone pull that.
I am reading off the wrong thing. I apologize. Thank you. So there's a motion on the floor for the approval of the agenda by Mr. Moan, seconded by Mr. Wright. Any questions? All right, seeing none, counsel, I'll ask for your vote, please. It's unanimous, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Madam Attorney, for keeping me straight. Item 6.0 is the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chris, who's seconded? Mr. McDougal? That is with the addition to advertise and give the city manager permission to set a public hearing to advertise for incentives on economic development.
Yes, yes. Is that 6.0, 6.10 or 6.08?
6.08 is where that goes.
Point one.
All right, it's just part of that...
Yes, sir.
Yeah, part of that item, Project Virtual. Thank you. All right, seeing no questions, counsel, I'll ask for your vote, please. Item 7.01 are reports from boards and commissions. We'll go to the Fayetteville Advisory Committee on Transit. That's a fact annual report.
Austin dressed up, man.
Welcome.
Thank you. I can tell by the look on your face, Mr. Mayor, that's a look of short, sweet, and succinct. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, counsel. My name's Austin Campbell. I am the chairman of the Fayetteville Area Committee on Transit. Like to give you a brief update of where we've been the last year and where we are going in the immediate future. Over the last year, we've updated and we've strengthened our appointment software to our reservation software for our ADA services. We've also been kicking around ideas as a board that we are going to update our transit development plan, which will be handed off to a consultant in March, March or April of next year, and the consultant will get to work on that, and you guys will have, I believe, a draft report on a new five-year transit development plan, hopefully sometime by the end of next year, January 2019. And worked very hard over the last year to get Sunday service, get Sunday service planned and approved. Like to thank everyone in the Budget Department. Of course, there's no one here from the Budget Department, but I'd like to thank the Budget Department for actually squeezing Sunday service into the budget, and you guys actually thinking enough of it to get it into this year's budget. We are going to be starting Sunday service in about two months, in mid-November. And last but not least, our wonderful transit center. We're hoping to have the building open in about five weeks, six weeks. I don't have a firm date on it, but hopefully it's going to be earlier mid-October, and we're going to have a ribbon cutting, a ribbon cutting about a week after. We're having a soft opening. That means don't lean too far in. We'll have a ribbon cutting about a week after our soft opening, so hopefully you guys can, please attend. And just to let you guys know, Commissioner Evans did stop me, and he says he wants an engraved, he's going to be there at our ribbon cutting. He wants an engraved invitation and big block of granite, so just in case you guys see a budget amendment for a big granite block, you know, that'll be for him.
Thank you. We'll keep our eyes open for that.
He can send a check, we'll be happy to purchase it.
I didn't want to tell, I know nobody's watching this, but I didn't want to tell them that, but, you know, I didn't have the guts to tell them that, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For the viewing and listening audience, Austin joins us every meeting and is a great representative on the fact committee, so we certainly appreciate you. Item 7.02 is the 2017 Zoning Commission Annual Report. Is it you, Mr. Harmon, to make introductions?
That's my plan, Mr. Mayor. Just to introduce you to our chairman, Mr. Ben Stout. He has been the chairman of the zoning commission for about four years now and believe is about to go off at the end of this month. Is that right?
Potentially, I guess.
I think his time is up, but he's going to give you all a little information on the zoning commission, but a lot of that information you already know.
Yes, thank you for y'all's time this evening. So I guess in the fiscal year of 2016, 2017, we saw a total of 32 cases. Per the report, about 89% of the time, our recommendation mimicked the city councils and the city staff, so typically the staff makes the recommendation to us, is voted upon, and then our recommendation is passed on to y'all for a vote. So I'd say the biggest thing that's kind of changed over the last year was the Board of Adjustment was consolidated into the zoning commission, and so that happened in December of 2015. So it's just kind of added another little layer of responsibility, but we have a good group of men and women who contribute. The city staff has worked diligently to give us our packages and as much information as possible to make the right decisions, or I guess the decision that we feel would benefit the city the most. Typically, the impact on these projects are, depending on what they ended up, typically they bring new development and revenue to the city, so I think all of us on the board take it pretty seriously, and we always have, depending on the case, a spirited crowd one way or the other, depending on it. Some of them are very easy, and I'm sure some of them that come before y'all too provide the same challenges they present to us, but we appreciate y'all's support and the city staff's report, and if you have any questions or comments or anything, be happy to take them.
Does anyone have questions, Mr. Stout? I don't see any. Thank you so much for your service, sir.
Appreciate y'all's time.
Counsel, item 8.0 is the public forum. This is a time that Fayetteville residents can have input and a voice on what goes on in their city. Due to policy restrictions, the forum will last no longer than 30 minutes with each speaker limited to a three-minute limit to address the city council on city-related issues. Individuals wishing to speak at tonight's public forum should have signed up with the city clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. If you're here to speak on items that may be on tonight's agenda, if that's possible, we ask that you reserve your comments to the public hearing. So when your name is called by the city clerk, we ask that you come to the podium and clearly state your name and home address for the record. When you see the lights on the podium change from green to yellow, that is an indication you have 30 seconds left to speak. When you see the light turn red, that is an indication that your time has expired, and again, due to policy restrictions, this council will be unable to extend that time given. So that being said, Madam Clerk, please call the first speaker.
Mayor, our first speaker is Mr. Tom Clark.
Welcome, Mr. Clark.
Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight to bring up a little thing that's dear in my heart. In today's paper, there's a very good editorial...
Let me interrupt you real fast. State your full name and address for the record, please.
Excuse me, my name's Tom Clark. I live at 4643 Goldsboro Road, Wade, North Carolina. I'm not a city resident, but this does affect the city. What, like I was saying, the editorial in today's paper's got a very good question. The headline states, "Why Do We Tolerate Cakefield Pollution?" And at the very end of it, I don't have time to go over all of it, everybody should read it though, because it's a very, it's a very good piece, but it says, "We don't want the Cakefield River to carry poison into our municipal water supplies. We assume no one does. A good loud public outcry can make a difference." Well, Mr. Mayor, that's what brings me here. I guess I'm the public outcry. Mr. Mayor, this is a question we all should be asking ourselves. I would like to take this time to discuss a project that would do just that. As you and all of us know, that the city of Fayetteville gets its drinking water from the river, the Cakefield River. The Atlantic Coast Pipeline will drill under this river not once, but twice. It's not a question if this pipeline will leak, but it's a question when it will leak. All pipelines... All pipelines leak. At last month's council meeting, it was stated that this pipeline will not affect the city of Fayetteville. I would have to disagree with you. It will affect the city of Fayetteville, its drinking water. With more pollution dumped into the Cape Fear River, I can only ask that our leaders get all the facts before they give their support. And I have a little newspaper article here, I'd like to give it to Madam Clerk, if she would make sure each council member gets a copy. Thank you for your time.
Madam Clerk?
Our next speaker is Ms. Ann Schrader.
Welcome, Ms. Schrader.
Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening, my name's Ann Schrader, I live up the hill in Haymount at 223 Stedman Street. And I'm here to speak on behalf of the citizens of Fayetteville and this beautiful state of North Carolina and the horrifying and ongoing assault on our waterways and drinking water. I spoke last month against Duke Energy's proposed Atlantic Coast Pipeline, which would, among many other disruptive processes, dynamite and dig up 230 wetlands, streams, and rivers, including six major rivers, including our Cape Fear River, which it crosses twice. Duke Energy is one of the largest utilities in the nation, and this is off, in the nation. And it is also a reckless and intentional polluter, with the main interest in making profits for itself and its shareholders at the expense of citizens and the environment's health and well-being. Let us be very clear and recall, Duke Energy illegally and criminally dumped a massive 82,000 tons of toxic coal ash into the Dan River, resulting in the largest and most disastrous federal criminal fine in North Carolina history. And this was after ignoring repeated, repeated warnings to exercise controls. Also, around the same time, North Carolina regulators cited Duke Energy for illegally and deliberately dumping 61 million gallons of toxic coal ash waste into the tributary of the Cape Fear River. And again, after repeated disregard and repeated ignoring of warnings to maintain safety regulations. Right here in Fayetteville, DuPont, who's changed their name to Kemmers, has been dumping Generation X and/or paint thinners, Teflon varnishes into the Cape Fear River for almost 30 years. All poisons that we and our children and our families drink every day. In addition, North Carolina and their waterways and soil and air is also polluted and harmed by some of the largest agricultural industries of hog, chicken, and cow waste in this nation. Our rivers and waterways are like a circulatory system of our body. If you inject toxins into your arm, it quickly reaches every vein and artery in your body. Our waterways are in many ways the same. You cannot isolate dumping poisons and pollution to only your jurisdiction, as these poisons and waterways affect us all. It is a human and citizen right to have clean drinking water. And healthy waterways, as they are, an integral part of our daily lives. Citizens put their trust in you, our city officials and leaders, to make policies that keep us and our beautiful state safe and healthy.
Thank you very much for your comments, your time is expired.
Thank you, I'll finish this tomorrow, or next month, I'll come back and finish this.
Always glad to have you, that's why we give you the time. Madam Clerk?
Our next speaker is Mr. Jerry Reinal.
Welcome, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, distinguished members of the Fayetteville City Council. My name is Jerry Reinal, 516 Deer Path Drive, Fayetteville, North Carolina. During last city council meeting, you considered and approved the College Lake Shoreline Drive Emergency Road Repair. And I want to compliment Councilwoman Jensen for, you know, taking the lead on that thing and moving it through the process. At that same meeting, several of our College Lake community members were here to hear, you know, to hear the action take place. So tonight, I'm sort of reporting to them. This afternoon or today, the Finance Office released the request for quotes for that repair work. So hopefully, once the paperwork gets done and the process works it through the process, we'll see the big dig taking place out there and repair that damaged culvert. And there again, I thank you for the prompt action, and hopefully we'll get that repaired before any more serious damage occurs, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk?
Our next speaker is Mr. Robert Walls.
Mayor, councilmembers.
Welcome, sir.
AR 670 S1 for business for wearing this in a public forum. But it's probably critical that you understand, as a veteran, I'm one of the veterans you're throwing away the trash.
Let me ask you to start by stating your name and home address for the record, please.
Robert Walls, 1436 Valencia Drive. I spoke to you and your administration about looking at ordinances and laws almost four years ago that directly relate to quality of life issues. You name it, from speeding, vagrancy, basic stability, noise, none of that has had any positive traction. Anyone who's served in the military understands, you lead, you follow, or you get out of the way. I haven't seen leadership here. I'm still living in the same city that I retired in a year and a half ago, thinking that the all-American city would mirror all-American values. I'm waiting for that to happen. You can slap paint on a building, you can build a baseball stadium, but when mom makes her apple pie, she's doing it under locked doors and closed windows. The quality of life issues that I've seen haven't been addressed. For instance, I talked to Mr. Winchell, he's one of your crime prevention specialists. From April 2010 to April 2017, there were 1,062 noise citations for all of Fayetteville, which breaks down to 151 a year. 12 a month. 12 a month. 12 noise violations, and noise is easy to handle. If we can't handle simple noise ordinance violations, then what else can we handle? I expected more from the all-American city. Whether it's polarized, or whether it's a Republican or Democrat issue, it needs to be an American issue. This is all-American city. Action needs to happen, not just stagnation. If you need to talk to me later, you can find me, it's easy to find me. My house is the one with the American flag flying in distress. 16 years ago, I know where I was. I was overseas defending this country, shortly after that, I was in Afghanistan. So I understand what sacrifice is, and I understand what it means to buckle down and get things done. That's all I've asked of the city. Beware the sacrifice of the names that you call it, Soldier Sanctuary, All-American. Councilmembers, thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for your service. Madam Clerk?
Mayor, those are all of our speakers for this evening on the public forum.
Okay, we will close the public forum and move into the public hearing. Item 9.01, let me read my little disclaimer first, Mr. Brown. For individuals wishing to speak at tonight's public hearing, they must have signed up to speak with the city clerk prior to 7 o'clock, with your name and address, which must be stated at the same time you come up to speak. 15 minutes will be allowed for each side of the issue of the public hearing. Individuals wishing to speak will be limited to three minutes each, unless previously arranged to have a single spokesman. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and clearly state your name and home address for the record. When you see the lights on the podium change from red to yellow, that's an indication that you have 30 seconds left to speak. When you see the red light turn on, that means that your time has expired, and due to policy limitations, we are unable to extend that time. So, item 9.01 is PWC Phase 5 Annexation Area 20 and 21 Utility Improvement Project Public Hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council, I have a brief presentation before we start the public hearing today, and I will be available after the public hearing. If anybody who speaks has any questions for us, I can help them answer those questions. So we have two areas, Area 20, which is in the blue here, okay, which is Robin Hills Estate, Lake Point, and Hankin Hills. And Area 21, which is Aaron Lakes West, in green on this slide. So where we're at on the project is, we're just getting ready to go out for bid for construction. So I'm going to give you a little overview of what's happened so far, of what's going to be happening, council policy on how the assessments are handled, and then what options customers have, citizens have for paying the assessments. So on August 4th of 2016, we sent out the survey notifications, and in February 22nd of 2017, we gave the appraisal notifications for easements that were associated with the project. On August 14th of 2017, the council adopted the preliminary assessment resolution. And on August 25th, we mailed copies of the resolution to the property owners affected by this. Upcoming events, we're preparing to advertise construction bid in the next month or so. Then construction is complete, we'll come to the council with the preliminary roll and confirm the assessments for council action. Council policy for assessment on the Phase 5 sewer extensions is a single-family residential lot is assessed $5,000 for sanitary sewer. All the other properties which are non-single-family residential are assessed at the same per-foot cost, $55.56 with a minimum 90-foot frontage. Plus, the non-single-family residential's are assessed the average cost of the lateral installed for the project. And all of these areas are sewer-only installations. There's no payment due for the assessment until construction is complete and council adopts the assessment role. Financial assistance is available through city staff, through Victor's area, for those who qualify. Payment options, citizens can pay the assessment in full with no interest within 30 days of when the council acts on the assessment. Financing is available over 10 years. Council's policy is to establish the interest rate at the time of the assessment, and customers can pay over 10 years in annual or monthly installments. With that, I'm available if you have any questions.
I see none.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, call the first speaker, please.
Our first speaker is Mrs. Cheryl Garrett.
Welcome, Ms. Garrett, you may need to bring that microphone down. There you go. Yes, ma'am, state your name and home address for us.
My name is Cheryl Garrett, I live at 6522 Senator Drive. We also own the home next to that. We are the owners of the 7th and 8th home coming into Robin Hills subdivision, and want you to understand that the only thing that we have received is basically the notification on August 30th about the $5,000. We were sent a letter a few years ago, did we want to continue having sewer, PWC sewage available to us, and we did mail that back. My problem with all of this is this. Whenever we dealt with anything as far as the county went, we always received a letter when they were going to dig up the front of our street. First, maybe I better stop and explain to you. As far as I know, last time we tried to get speed bumps in our neighborhood because of the traffic and such occurring, being just over the top, we were told that we needed 500 signatures for it, we got that, nothing was done. We are the only in and outie. Those are, it's an old neighborhood, old trees. If one tree falls across that road, they drive up into the yards to get around. If we flood, and the night of, before the Hope Mills Dam broke, there were 32 cars drowned out in front of our house. Anytime there's an exceedingly amount of rain, and for some reason or other, it must be their topography, we seem to get it, nobody else in Fayetteville do, but we do. We've had as many as 20-some-odd cars drowned out there for the sewage. They've come in and they've cleaned up, it's gotten better, but it still happens. We got 2 and 3/4 inches of rain the other night. You can't believe what was going on out in the front of that street with almost 3 inches of rain. I can only wonder what's going to happen when the street is tore up. We're probably going to be put to a single lane with, I don't know the accurate number, of over 500 residents in the back of the neighborhood coming out of there trying to get to work to Fort Bragg, both civilian and military. Many of us are retired, we do have small children on the street. I've lived there 27 years, and I'm here, excuse me, 37 years, and I can tell you that we have had one man hit, went into hospital, came home and died of a heart attack that week. Two children on two separate occasions hit on that street. What kind of problems are we going to come up with? We have no idea how they're going to address that. I'm in a yard, we have a yard that when it floods, it washes away, so we built a terrace lawn. No one's come out and asked us about that. Because of the wash of the soil, it appears that it's only a block high. It's actually 3 blocks to 4 blocks in some areas, and go to 1. There's a big oak tree that's got a metal rod down of it, because there are 2 or 3 trees that have grown into 1. No one has issued any kind of letter asking us what kind of problems could be addressed with this particular home lot that we live in and next door. We've seen that in the past where a letter was sent to us. We're concerned. We've tried to contact, we didn't know who, what, where. I've called the city about it. Probably what I should have done was called PWC, I didn't do that. But I would like those problems addressed before they go in and tear up a street and people in the back can't get out.
Thank you, we like to blame PWC for a lot of stuff.
No, 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 I think they're good guys.
Yeah, they are good guys.
Yes, they are.
And I was kidding, would you and Mr. Stone meet her outside?
Thank you for listening to me, I appreciate it.
Thank you so much, thank you for being here. Madam Clerk?
Mayor, our next speaker is Mrs. Andre Jefferson.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, I am Andre Jefferson. I too live at 6636 Barn Road in Robin Hills. I came here tonight because I received one of those letters. The language in the letter is sort of vague for some areas. It doesn't address how you decide which property, single-family home, is going to be assessed the $5,000 or the $55, $56 per foot. That's one of my concerns. Also, another question I have is, will the new sewage system affect taxable value of the property? Okay, and will this cause my property taxes to rise on top of the cost for installing the sewer? These are my concerns for my family. And I understand living in that one-way-in, one-way-out, and what it's going to do to the neighborhood. And so please consider these things when, because we have family and children, schools, and it's already complicated as it is. So please consider that with this, thank you.
Thank you. You may also want to get together with these guys outside. Thank you.
Our final speaker is Mrs. Kehona Sims.
Call last time, please.
Mrs. Kehona Sims.
And that's the last speaker, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, we'll close the public hearing on that item. Mr. Wright?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we approve the PWC Phase 5 Annexation Area 20 and 21 Utility Improvement Project.
Mr. Wright made the motion, is here seconded.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mayor Pro Tem. Any discussion on the item? Seeing none, council, I'll ask for your vote, please. Item 9.2 in the public hearings is a proposed installment financing agreement to finance Fire Station Number 12. It's a resolution accepting the proposal of Branch Bank and Trust to provide the financing. Also, the resolution making certain findings and a request from local government commission now we know as the LGC to approve the financing. Ms. Cheryl Spivey, our CFO, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Tonight is the night that has been set for the public hearing to consider the proposed financing for Fire Station 12. In addition, we are asking city council to select BB&amp;T to provide the financing. They've offered the lowest price on a 20-year financing. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. They offered the lowest price on a 20-year financing at 2.50 for 20 years. This is also the night that we would request that city council approve the findings resolution, which is required by the local government commission, and also requests that the local government commission approve the financing.
Thank you, Ms. Spivey. Council, seeing there are no speakers, I'll open and close the public hearing on this item and go to you for action. Mr. Hirsch?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the accepting of BB&amp;T 2.55 20-year bank qualified rate proposal.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hirsch, seconded by Mr. Arp. Discussion? Seeing none, council, I'll ask for your vote. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Mr. Hirsch, I'll go back to you for item number 10. That is the presentation of the Appointments Committee's recommendations for the Boards and Commissions' appointments.
Mr. Mayor, there were a couple of other items, I mean resolutions to adopt on the...
Are you saying that we need to read that?
Yes.
Hey, Bobby, want me to read it? All right. To adopt a resolution approving BB&amp;T as the winning bidder to finance Fire Station Number 12 on Hope Mills Road in District 5 to the amount not to exceed $3,600,000 authorized direct city manager and this chief financial officer, Ms. Spivey. To execute and deliver documentation as may be necessary to accept the proposal of the lender, adopt a resolution making certain findings and determinations regarding the proposed financing and request the LGC to approve the financing agreement arrangement. Is that correct?
Yes.
Well, thank you. Seconded by...
Mr. Arp?
Yes, sir.
Still seeing no questions? Council, I'll ask for your vote again. Madam Clerk, that again is unanimous. Now, Mr. Hirsch, back to you for the Appointments Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and fellow colleagues. This is my last opportunity to present recommendations to you on the Boards and Commissions. It's been a privilege to serve the last nine years as your Chair of the Boards and Commissions' Appointments Committee. And I appreciate the excellent service of our current members, which are Mayor Robertson, Ms. Kathy Jensen, and very long-serving Bill Crisp, and Councilmember Chalmers McDougall. With that, I move to approve the following recommendations for Boards and Commissions' appointments, which will be effective October 1st, 2017, as follows. That would be for the Animal Control, which is a county board, Ms. Shannon Pingatour, Fair Housing Board, Mr. Otis Coffey, or Cuffey. For the Fayetteville City Planning Commission, Mr. Perry Massey, Mr. George Mike Dudley, Mr. Christopher Davis, Ms. LaKetia Payton, Mr. Stephen Milburn, Mr. Joseph Humphries, and Ms. Shalonda Crumady. For the Fayetteville City Zoning Commission, it would be Mr. Willis Watt, Mr. David Barron, Mr. Charles Jones. For the Fayetteville Public Works Commission, Mr. Darswell Rogers. For the Fayetteville Cumberland Economic Development Board, Mr. Andrew Pennick. For the Fayetteville Cumberland Human Relations Commission, it would be Ms. Donna Pelham, Mr. Greg Fox, Ms. Ingrid McCarthy, Ms. Vicky Techie-Dukes, Ms. Sarah Cole, and Ms. Mabelyn Rodriguez Loreno. For the Fayetteville Cumberland Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission, be Mr. Gary Weller, Ms. Demetrio Davis, Mr. Kelly Preier, Mr. Holden Reeves. For the Historic Resources Commission, be Mr. Kenan Jackson, Ms. Liz Vernadu, Dr. Mary Ferguson. For the Joint City and County Appearance Commission, Mr. Bill Vernakis, Ms. Katina Reinhardt, Ms. Helen Haynes, and Mr. Robert Lentz. For the Joint Fayetteville Cumberland Senior Citizens Advisory Commission, Mr. Jeffrey Renn, Ms. Edna Cogdal, Ms. Gertrude Thompson, Ms. Quandarlin Goodson, Ms. Gertrude Armstrong. For the Stormwater Advisory Board, Mr. Thomas Patrick Murray, and Mr. Larry Smalls. And also for the Audit Committee, Mr. Glenn Goldsmith. That is recommended to the council.
Second the motion.
Mr. McDougall?
I was going to make the motion, but I guess he was making it, so it's good.
Go ahead and make it, and we'll...
Mr. Mayor and City Council, I move that we accept the recommendation of the Appointments Board, as read by Councilmember Bobby Hirsch.
Okay. With a second by Mr. Crisp.
Second the motion, the two motions.
There were two.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Crisp?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to take a moment to publicly thank Councilmember Hirsch. Nine years is an awful long time to serve as the Chair of any committee, and especially this important committee. And the Appointments Committee is so relevant to what goes on in this city because it's impossible for this council to do all of the business that's required. We have to have citizens help. And I just want to publicly say thank you to Councilmember Hirsch for his diligence and for his sacrifice of nine years of chairing this committee. And that's just quite a sacrifice that's very worthy of commendation. Thank you so much.
Ms. Jensen?
Mr. Crisp beat me to the punch, but I wanted to publicly thank Councilmember Hirsch for all his hard work. I've been on this council for four years, and I know that we've been back and forth a lot of the times, and you have handled it like a true gentleman, and you have stayed the course, and you've taught us a lot. And I thoroughly enjoyed my time on Boards and Commissions, and you did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen. Mayor Pro Tem?
Bobby. I want to thank you, man, for your hard work, and, I mean, you've had some interesting dialogue with your Appointments Committee, but you hung in there and you've done a great job, and you put up with my questions, so thank you. Good job.
Mr. Wright?
Thank you, Bobby.
Yeah, I think on behalf of the entire council, you know, unless you're really on the committee, you have no idea how much work is involved with the Appointments Committee, much less the Appointments Chair, who has to have all of his Ts crossed and Is dotted before the meetings. So Bobby, on behalf of the council, thank you very much.
Thank you, Bobby.
Counsel, I don't see anything else on the agenda that...
We have to vote.
Oh, we do have to vote. Thank you. There was a motion and appropriate second. I don't see any more questions, though. So, counsel, I'll ask for your vote. Thank you. All over the place tonight. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. And council, at this point, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.